Okay. Thank you. It is six o'clock. Now for all the reading to order. First on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, the flag is back here on the floor.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is approving the minutes of January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and February fifth of twenty twenty-four. We have a motion to approve minutes. Second. Motion in second. Any discussion, corrections, or otherwise? All in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Okay, next up is approving the roll of accounts dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand dollars, two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And February eighth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and ninety cents. And February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Do we have a motion to approve those rolls? Don't move. Karen Beattie. That's second, Steve?
Second.
All right. Very good. Any discussion, corrections? Okay. All in favor of approving the rolls as presented? Okay, if there is no objection, what I'd like to do is move up on the agenda, so these kind of people don't need to hang around with us all night. I'd like to move up the recognition of our high school state champions for indoor track. I'm sure they're not running outdoors, so. Doesn't say indoors on the agenda, but I'm presuming it's in. So if there's no objection, we'll move that up on the agenda. So. First up is that recognition, so I think if Mr. Burgoyne would say a few words about.
Uh, yes, Mr. Nettle, the person.
Nice delegation.
I just want to say thank you for recognizing these athletes tonight. A bigger thank you is our track was redone this past summer. And that's a huge task, and I think people probably overlook and they don't, they don't see, but. Very excited for outdoor because that surface now is measured correctly, not just for high school track, but for junior high track, which the distances are slightly different. And for summer track, which the program feeds what we're doing here today, not just in our community, but Maslonski, Lawrence, Waterline, a little bit further than that. So I'm just going to say thank you now because if you haven't been out there, probably the nicest I've seen it in fifteen years. It's just beautiful, the numbers are beautiful, the colorations are exceptional. Whoever we hired to paint was the real deal, so. I really appreciate that from a coaching standpoint, so I wanted to put that out to the board, just to know that it's a big deal. And it's not just used by us, right? It's used by our community as well. Looking at the indoor track season, we only had about eighteen kiddos, but when you put that into perspective, what we do here at Winslow is nothing short of exceptional. And that's not just because we have good coaches. And I'm not speaking about myself when I say that, but when we have the good coaches, we have the best. Coach Kellerman, Coach Dooley, who's not here, and Coach, I always mess this one up. Coach Fornier. They, we have two volunteer coaches that take a huge load off what we, what I do. Sometimes I'm the face, but it's the people that you don't see that are doing things that make our program what it is today. So looking at the state championships, I think the bigger highlight probably is the KVAC championships. Our kids just can run. And if you get an opportunity this spring, I really suggest that you come out and see what we do. But our kids can really, can really fly. In our four-by-eight year, uh, this year, our kids broke the school record numerous times and are considered number four in the state. So when you compare that to our three hundred and eighty kiddos, which I know that number is probably a little heavy. Number four in the state, we're talking, we're running against the, we could beat some of the best of the best. And on that team is, we have Brayden Rio. He's Dan Brayden. If you don't know Brayden, I suggest you do. I, I think the distances that we have competitively here that he competes in are not even close to what he can run distance-wise. You'll see him all summer running, but he's, he's the real deal when it comes to going, going far. We have Ethan Rancourt. This is two years in a row Ethan's been able to carry a little bling around with him, so it's pretty cool. Justin Rogers, a senior for us. I think the unfortunate part, I'm going to kind of poo-poo on Joey for a second, is Justin is in his shadow a little bit because Joey, Joey can really clean it up. But Justin's an exceptional athlete. His numbers, if Joey wasn't around, we'd be talking just about Justin. And that's just, that's the honest truth, right? And that's just sport, sometimes, right? Sometimes you have the best friend and they're on your own team and they can, they can do it just a hair better. And that competition, I think, is great, but I think their friendship is greater. I think that's what we have built through, you know, many years here at Winslow High School, so. Justin, again, congratulations and just great year and your leadership. And finally, he said, oh, stay, stay standing. We got Joey. So to kind of, to bring everything together, so I had Joey in my summer track program a number of years ago, and he was equally as handsome as he is here today. But it just shows you like things come in full circle, right? So I had Joey when he was this big and he was a triple jump state champion way back, way back when, but Joey currently holds seven school records. To put that into perspective, he is the best athlete we've had in track and field at this school, and I'm talking the best, I don't, I'm not even, and I know we had Aaron Turbine who went to the Olympics. Okay, I'm telling you, completeness, he holds a record in the fifty-five, the, the two-hundred, the four-hundred, the eight-hundred, the triple jumping, almost had the long jump, including the four-by-eight and the four-by-four. He's the most complete track athlete we've had, period. So. The thing that was cool is Joey was in probably the race of his life, which he didn't know, maybe at the time, but the four-hundred meter race, which he got second place in, which he's not getting a medal for. He pushed a kid to a limit that that kid has never been pushed in. Miles Burris is considered the cream of the crop in our state right now. So he's from MDI. Miles holds records all over the state. He was in a race with Joey that he didn't expect to be in, and because Joey is elite, they both broke the state record. His was point one-eight faster than Joey, but he could not compete in the two-hundred and ended up fifth overall. And Joey ended up winning that, which he's getting a medal today here for as well. But when you talk about completeness, that kid's never had to run like that. So we have somebody who's pretty special in our school, not just athletically, academically, socially. He's, he's probably the top of the top. So when I think of Winslow High School, a lot of people think football, when I think now, I think Joy Richards. And that's the type of kid we built here at Winslow High School, so.
Guys, jump in, these three seniors were all, all academic KVAC students, so not only they do it on the track, they're doing it in the classroom every day, and every one of these three is a leader, which bodes well for the future of our society.
Without further ado, when I, when I think of some of the legacies that we've had here at Winslow High School, my hope is that when I finally retire, that people see these kids and what we've done. Because we've not just sent kids here, but we have kids at, right now at Brown, we have kids at Harvard, we have kids at Dartmouth, so we're not just building track athletes, we're building some of the best kids we have in our school. So that's what our program does, so. Without further ado, I know you have medals to present, but when I get a chance to speak to the board, I'd like to. So it's on you now, you, I think you might have a list if you don't have it out.
Well, actually, if you could do the names while I present, that would be great. I, I will say this is one of the fun things of being on the board, uh, doing the budgets later is not quite in the same category. But, uh, you know, done this quite a few times with a bunch of your kids, so that's great. Love to see that. Now, Joey's a senior, you said, right? You run a track somewhere next year?
Yeah, probably you, so.
All right, great. Yeah, I'm sure they'll be very happy to have you, so. But, uh, no, it's great.
Appreciate it.
So, uh, congratulations, Coach, and, uh.
First off, that's Ethan Rancourt.
Yep.
Next up here, we have Justin Rogers. Third, Brayden Rio.
I don't know how many times you've done this.
And Joey gets two because he won one individually.
That's right.
And he gets any one-one has on the four-by-eight as well. Point one-eight would have gotten you third, Joe.
That one for the coach here?
Sure.
How many coaches?
Four. Three are here, one is not.
Four. We are at war. Yeah, thank you, good time. Great job.
Thank you.
You can hang around with some budgets if you want. Thank you for representing, we go very well. Come on, come on. All right. Next up is reporter committees. Do we have any committee reports? I don't think so. That is, we have an agenda item for, okay. For cheering, so. Where's that on the agenda? Oh, there it is, okay, very good. Well, do we want to move that up? Are we having administrative reports? So, I guess so that we can move things along for our illustrious cheering coach. Hey, you guys have done some great things this year. If there is no, um, no issue with it, I would just sue, uh, with Amy, uh, do her presentation. Uh, under new business, we had request permission for an out-of-state trip, so we can let Amy do that and we can send her on her way while we're doing all our other fun stuff.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just watch it on, on my streaming. I'll put it on my to-do list.
She's just saying that's a little.
So I just have the privilege of representing our competition cheering team. First of all, again, I want to say thank you to the school board, I, I think I sent out a few emails here or there, but um, the support that you've shown us and just the encouragement has really paid off, I think, for the program as a whole. Um, and like Coach Nettle was saying, you know, the athletes that I have now, if you go through the elementary school and look at all of those, at our little trophy case in the hallway, there's just a ton of first place, second place trophies back from when these kids were in youth programs. So, you know, they're still, they're still getting it done. So KVAC champs this year, and, um, we are third in the state for the co-ed division for New England, that's a big deal because they combine classes A, B, C, there's no longer class D for cheering, there just wasn't enough schools, they reconfigured, which put us in class B. So, um, we're in a very tough category going to New England, so last year we got an opportunity to go, we were so thankful we did. We were, you know, the worst of the best, and it was a good place to be, it really felt good. We were hoping to be within like ten points of the team above us, because when we go to New England, we're competing against teams from Rhode Island, like, you know, class A teams. And, um, the networking is really what I was hoping for, and I got to see some really cool stuff, and it really has already paid off. For example, Brody is the reason we're in the co-ed stunting, and, um, he learned so much. It's the difference from, between last year with him and his partners, so this year, it's just huge. So we'd like to go again. We're probably going to be the worst of the best again, and I'm okay with that because it's just this amazing trip, and when you're cheerleaders, you just want to get out there and have a good routine. So I'd like your permission to bring them out of state. Our plan is what we did last year, um, is to have the parents carpool, we have, you know, them sign off the liability and make sure we pass the insurance in and all of the paperwork that needs to be done through the office, but I'm still feeling very strongly that, um, staying the night and being fresh to compete is the best way to go about it. The only thing that we need from this school is the registration fee, um, which I believe is a hundred and fifty dollars, and the rest that our boosters will pay for, including meals and all of that, so it would be of no cost to any of the athletes at all.
I recall that's how it worked all last year, so.
Yep.
And as far as carpooling, you have enough drivers and you got, because you got quite a team, so you got.
Yes, so we have, we have fourteen athletes that were able to perform this year. Two of them are all-star athletes, so we won't be able to be bringing our seniors with us. So we'll be having twelve, so yeah, and I'll make sure I, um, when I send the paperwork, it'll be like, you know, these children are going with this parent in that car and.
And where is it this year?
Uh, back at Worcester University, so Worcester Mass. I can't say without saying Worcester.
All right. Yeah, this is a repeat, repeat trip, so it's something too new for us, but. You know. Honestly, I think it paid off. I think the experience, you know, even if you don't expect a place and all that, I mean, the experience and learning from what you see others do is, it surely worth the experience.
Yeah, I mean, they, we made a huge jump in this course, you know, we have the, we got the Mary Beth Schavel Award at KVACs, which is the most approved plaque, which honestly is something that I, you know, had my eye on, and I've been coaching for twenty-two years, so that's just a coveted thing to have, and then to get that the same day that we got KVAC champions, and we went in super nervous to be in class B, as, you know, again, as Coach was saying, you know, we're a small school of three hundred and eighty, and, you know, we're like the bottom of the pile, we're barely in class B. Um, and then to come out, um, by far, we, you know, we went by, um, almost nine points after penalties. And then to have the opportunity for Mr. Burgoyne to handle the plaque was even, was cool. It, it was a good, good year, good run.
It was. Fortunate to see your performances and, and I didn't see those state one lines, but, but, uh, I did see it online and it was very, very good, so. So, uh, does anybody have any questions regarding the trip? So, uh, since this is our state trip, we do have to vote to approve it. So that's why it's before the board, so.
So you need a motion?
So we need a motion.
I'll second.
I'm a second, right? Okay. Any discussion, questions otherwise? Good luck. Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor of approving the trip for cheering? Did you announce?
I appreciate that.
Very good.
Right, and that's your budget.
So if you get most improved next year, then that will be real for you.
Yeah, we'd be very close to the top of the score sheet, that's, that's not. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So we didn't have any committee reports, correct? So administrative reports, so we'll start with Mr. Bell. I'm gonna, uh, give my time to Mr. Burgoyne, and you'll hear a knock for me in a little bit. Okay.
Good evening, uh, just a couple of students to recognize from our student of the month assembly this morning. For the freshman class, we had Ben Thomas recognized. Sophomore was Mary Grace Day. The juniors was Patrick Smith, and the seniors were Matt Kirin. And also this week, we have our second week of winter carnival, the, you have the week before break. Usually they do outdoor activities, weather permitting, and then the week after break, they have indoor activities where the classes compete against each other in a variety of different games, competitions, whatever it may be. Um, and it's quite a turn-up for our school, so it's a pretty big hit there. And, uh, we will conclude the winter carnival with a dance Saturday night from eight to eleven, and I hope to see you all in attendance.
Is it Friday night or Saturday night?
Saturday night.
I think Saturday.
Saturday from eight to eleven. Last year, I believe, we did Friday night, if I remember correctly, but in the years prior, it was always been Saturday.
Oh, I had a Friday in my head, I'm glad I.
Saturday from eight to eleven, so. And that's that.
Any questions for the high school?
That's it.
All right, very good.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Burgoyne.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of quick hitters for you this evening. Uh, we administered our main three-year testing, the winter diagnostic, a couple of weeks ago, that's postponed, I think, a few times due to various things. So we're currently reviewing the data for that, um, as it ties to our school goals that were presented back in September. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled Monday, March fourth, and that meeting will actually include Michelle, myself, not only the core teachers that teach the content of the test, but, um, other teachers will be invited as well, so we can work on making the necessary changes at the midway point to keep improving and growing for our students. Some more information at the March meeting, meeting will be coming out for you. Uh, we have our Renaissance Assembly on March eighth, which is just a few weeks away. Uh, our student of the month, Michael Raider, will be coming up on the twenty-second, along with another school dance in March, we do a March Madness, fun week, so we're always looking for chaperones for middle school parents. The kids love it, the dance, lunch isn't dance, middle school, if you, if you remember your children going through middle school, they, they look forward to lunch every day, and the school day, Mr. Rakes, when's the next school dance, when's the next school date? So it's a big deal. And our jazz band, we go to states on the twenty-third of March, um, that's located in Waterline, we'll add more information to share from Mr. Clark. Uh, in this video, we'll get some information about chorus as well. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for the junior high? Thank you very much, very good, thank you. Mr. Gower.
I'm actually going to have Mr. Harrison present for us tonight.
Wow. See, Jason, you just needed to hand it off to Chris Kirk. He's the, he's the friend.
Few, few things to share from the elementary school. Uh, the first one is from, uh, the end of January, actually, I'm not sure if we mentioned it the last time we were together, about how great of an experience it was for our Raider-Reader program with the boys and girls basketball players coming over to the elementary school to spend time with our, our students, getting, they got into every classroom and spent time reading with our students, our, they were really excited and it was a great experience all around. Uh, so thank you to those students that came over, excuse me, that came over. February seventh, we had our first grade concert, uh, you know, our, our students did a great job again with that, and it was very well attended, so it was a great night of singing and music. Wednesday, February fourteenth, we had our sixth grade jazz band students join the junior high and high school students going over to Maslonski High School for the District Four Jazz Festival. We had ten students from our school participate in that. We had Helen Ali, Amelia Cantwell, Gerard Forden, Deacon Greiner, Ashley Huzzy, Kaylee Casares, Ashley, Ashley McGurman, Callan Oaks, Storm Slater, and Leah Voidblow. So nice job to those students. The week leading up to vacation, we had our most recent round of student spotlight assemblies. We had four assemblies throughout the week where we recognized fifty-three students, uh, in grades kindergarten through sixth grade. So it was a great experience and great time to recognize and celebrate those students for all that they've been doing with their academics and their hard work in the classroom, and really just the positive contributions that they're making throughout our school. So that was a great way to finish up the week leading into vacation. Today, we had our faculty leadership team meeting, where we looked at data from our I-ready reading and math assessments, kind of looking at our progress and growth, um, starting in the fall throughout our most recent assessment this past winter. So those teachers will be taking the data back to their grade level team meetings to share with their grade level colleagues, uh, to really look at that data, you know, recognize, uh, things that are going well, and also other areas to continue to focus and work on. So that will be happening in the coming weeks. And finally, as we get into the month, month of March, a few, a few things, uh, coming up in that month, we have two concerts, a second grade concert Wednesday, March sixth, at six o'clock at our elementary school. And at the end of the month, the third grade concert will be March twenty-seventh, also at six o'clock. And finally, uh, Monday, March eleventh, and Wednesday, March thirteenth, we have our parent guardian teacher conferences after school into the early evening. So that's all.
Any questions for the element? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, I'm going to go with Mr. Burgoyne. You know you can't hand it off.
I lead quick.
I already hit that one.
We already heard the great losing track. In this day and age where sportsmanship is such a big issue, we discuss it every time we meet as a conference with the athletic directors, it's always great to have the pleasure to get an email like I got today that said, Winslow Girls Basketball Team received the MPAs class B Northern Maine Sportsmanship banner. And that's always a lot better than giving, receiving a phone call about bad sportsmanship, so that does make me smile. Uh, we had the opportunity to showcase our campus last week, when we hosted the girls' state championship in wrestling, and it was a huge success. Probably could use a little more parking. And I think the, the confidence for our school, just how beautiful our school was, was nice to hear, you know. Obviously, we'd like to have more girls wrestling, we only had two, but hopefully in the future, a lot more. But it was a great day for Winslow Wrestling and a great day for the school. Thank you.
That was on the news, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. And both of our girls placed third that competed, which is pretty awesome, having those breaks, wow.
And that's a nice change that the state has done to recognize them as their own state championship, rather than having a co-ed. It's been fantastic.
And there were so many girls.
Sorry, I assume the numbers statewide are growing. Oh, yeah, it is growing.
From sixty-eight to ninety-seven in one year.
Wow, wow. That's growth. Great. All right, well, we'll see what next year brings. All right. Jennifer.
Actually, I didn't have anything to share tonight. I just thought I'd ask a few people to present, and ask you a question for me.
Well, I don't have any questions. No news is good news, right? Um, Michelle, I'm in the podium over there.
I'm happy to share with you that we received fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents in a non-competitive grant from the Department of Education for literacy.
Wow.
The grant is somewhat unique because it is targeting tier-one students, which is all kids. Often times grant monies are targeting, um, tier-two kids for intervention, and this money was explicitly for tier-one kids for core instruction in, in the area of reading. Another unique feature, uh, makes it different from what our title funding is, is that this grant was for grades K through twelve. Our Title One funding is only for the elementary school. So this was a unique opportunity for the upper grades to receive some materials to help in the area of reading instruction. The grant focused on our district goal of student engagement toward achievement, and what resources could we bring to bear to increase engagement. We looked at our fall and mid-year data and decided, um, on that, kind of what our goals would be in the grant. Emphasis is going to be, and was written to be, on vocabulary acquisition, comprehension specifically in the area of informational text influencing. So, um, Amanda and I will start ordering those items, and I can tell you there are hundreds and hundreds of items. And I can tell you there are hundreds and hundreds of items that we have asked the teachers, looked at our data, set our goals, what resources do we need to make some improvements in these areas.
Can I make a quick comment? Just on reading in general at Windsor Elementary School. My youngest son really struggled with reading and he has an IEP and gets, you know, special help with reading. The teachers and the curriculum and the way that he has been helped, he this year is now at reading, at his grade level. And it's because of the programs at the school and just the approach and it's amazing. I'm so grateful, yeah.
It's really great to hear, thank you. Because as you know, we're in that first year of that new reading program at the elementary school and the data was very favorable in the winter. We were very encouraged, but it's great to hear a person's story. It's meant for your son, that's great, yeah. Next up is a technology grant through the Milti Program that is a competitive grant. And we're working on writing that now. We'll submit that, I hope, early March.
So before, Michelle sits down and you want to emphasize a couple of things. You know, she said non-competitive grant, which is true, it's a non-competitive grant, however, there are all kinds of rules and stipulations that accompany these non-competitive grants. They have timelines in which you need to do all of the work and then they have these other deadlines where you need to spend the money and show demonstrate data. Michelle has done a wonderful job pulling everybody together and putting this together in a very short period of time in order to do some creative writing for this particular project so that we receive funds because these funds help our students and this is just one other way in which the local budget is supported when we talk about being fiscally responsible and looking at different ways. This is another way in which that happens. So, nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
It's nice to hear what Meg had to say about the reading program. And Mr. Tom or Jason had talked about test results, it was Tom, right? We just.
All schools are.
Okay. But, yeah, at the appropriate time, I was thinking it would be nice to hear, you know, some statistics and data on improvement. It might be a little early yet, but, since it's a program that we approved, that we funded, we like to, you know, hear that it's working.
Showed favorable growth and progress of the elementary school reading and amount, so we were encouraged by that. We certainly have that data and we are lucky in all of them.
Yeah, great. It's always good to hear these new programs that we're putting in place, math and reading, that are getting results, so.
And the people, not just, yeah, progress, people. Dave had a new reading teacher, the other teacher, I don't know where he went. But I was like, oh no. And then it's another brilliant human being in his place, who's kind and wonderful and thoughtful. So, yeah, it's amazing.
The program doesn't work without equality and social.
Yeah.
It doesn't come to life without that human person to do that work.
Well, it's impressive that a new program comes because it's a whole new learning twist for all the teachers and to show that they've succeeded at it, to show the growth and the software.
It's good stuff, you know, you hear good stuff. Warren, alright, who haven't I gotten? Haven't gotten Shelley.
I really don't have anything to report out on. I know I wasn't as anxious to get to the budget.
You've been plowing snow like crazy all winter or just unbelievable?
I know.
Alright, well, good. I guess that's all the administrative reports. So I guess we'll move on to Amanda's report. What's the budget abstract?
64.93% of the fiscal year has passed and 64.07% of the budget has been spent. And if the convert items are removed, 63.28% has been spent. But we're moving. I am, so good news.
But it's still very close.
Getting better.
Alright. Any questions for Amanda?
Not a question, just a point. The budget is running very close. That budget runs close every year. And the reason that that budget runs close is because we often say that we put together a fiscally responsible budget to support our students. And when you see numbers running that close, there's no pad in there. It is what we need to operate our schools and operate a good school system.
Very true. So, superman's report.
Just quickly. Later on in January, sees as a resignation from one of our bus drivers. And not only are we losing a good bus driver unexpectedly, it also causes some rearranging, reorganization and planning in order for us to continue to safely transport our students to school and get them here on time without any major delays and disruptions. We were very fortunate to have one of the spare drivers be able to help us. Ashley Poole has worked with this driver in order for him to take our morning runs, this particular driver's run. And in the afternoon, Shelley worked with two of the drivers this afternoon. We have a plan in place. We call it the COVID Plan. If a driver became sick, what would we do to reorganize our runs? And how do we put certain students on certain buses in order to be delivered in the neighborhoods in which they live? Shelley worked on it this morning with two of the drivers, reorganized that along with Ashley's input. And Erica did a robo-call today to the families, alerting them of the change. Until a new driver can be found, we hope to be able to find a new driver. If not, we'll continue with this plan for the remainder of the year. So, thank you to Shelley for working, thank you for Erica for notifying the parents. And that's where we are with that. The other thing that I wanted to mention was just, you had several people present here this evening. Track coach, cheering coach, you heard them talk about working with students at a younger age. You heard them speaking about excellence. I want to come back and just mention, it is people, just like Meg, you mentioned the importance of people in working with various programs that we have. And this is a very special place in that you do have a lot of educators, staff, coaches giving 110% in order to deliver the best possible program that we can for our students. So, just another reminder of that. Last but not least, I've just recently learned that Paul Campbell, who was a former educator here in Windsor, I believe he spent all 38 years in this district teaching, has recently passed away. Just want to bring that to the board's attention.
Here, it's on that. That's it. Alright, any questions for Peter? Alright. Next up is public comment. Seems how I don't see anybody here from the public. Guess we can dispense with that. I will indicate for anybody that's watching online that you can email us anytime, reach out to us, feel free to do that. You don't have to speak at a meeting. We can be reached. And, but if you do plan on speaking at public comment, there is an introduction and a public comment policy is listed on our website as well. And feel free to check that out. So I will dispense with reading next night since we have nobody here, but we'll move on. Old business, apparently we don't have any old business. And new business, we did the track champions and we did the out-of-state trip, so that just leaves budget. So, very cool budget. We started with Mr. Bell. Apologize ahead of time, I'm a little under the weather. Both having said, ask any questions that you may have. First of all, before we get going and I get this up and running, any questions on the budget process at this point? I know there's a lot of you that may be new to this process. I just want to make sure that before I start my presentation, you have any questions you may have about the process that I answer. If at any point I skip over something that you may have a question about or if you want me to go back and explain something in more detail, feel free to stop me at any time. I don't want to go so slow that we're here till kind of 1:00 tonight, but I also don't want to go so fast that I skip over things and things aren't clear. But this was a perfect picture to kind of sum up the entire budget process for Windsor Public Schools. This is what we all work for, to get our students to this stage where they're ready to graduate. And there's a lot of excellent people to talk about what Meg was talking about, excellent educators along the way. And there's excellent school board members to help support budgets, town council members that support the budget, community members that support these kids, not just in the budget but in everything that they participate in at school. It's a good reminder that this is the endgame, right? This is what we're all in business for. In order to get kids to that point, there's a lot of things we have to do with school employees that get kids to that stage. There's a lot of things we need to do before we worry about their math and science scores and what we're trying to teach in the classroom. So, you've probably heard about Maslow's hierarchy of needs and I'm not going to give you a presentation on that. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me or use your Google machine. But what Maslow tells us is that before students can get to the top of the pyramid, all these other layers have to be taken care of. So if you think about the top as, you know, the student's development, their creativity, their growth, their learning, right? We have to make sure all these other things are taken care of, including at the very base level, the need for air, food, water, and health. You may be thinking, oh, well, doesn't every kid have that? Not necessarily. Then you get to the need for safety and shelter, right? I could keep going on, but I'm not gonna. You get the point that if we don't take care of these things down here, we can't get them to where we want to at the top. So how does this budget impact student needs? I'm gonna have you go to line 24 on page two. You're gonna notice that there is a new line there, something that wasn't budgeted before, and it's called contracted services hospital. We put $2,000 in there as a placeholder. And you'll see, obviously, it's an increase of $2,000 because we never had it before. There are times where students may need to be hospitalized for mental health reasons. And it seems to be happening more and more. While they're hospitalized, we are still responsible for their education and paying for that. If it's a special education student, there's lines within special ed that help to cover that tutoring. But a lot of times it's not a special ed student, it's a regular ed. So we need to have money where we, which we're responsible for, to pay for those tutoring services and to help out. This year, we had a situation, I think the final bill was $1,300, $1,400. And you're talking just a week or two, like, it's a pretty quick thing, so we did put in the line for $2,000 just to kind of cover that. This is where I'm gonna jump way down to page 19, line 274, because these two things kind of go together. And then we'll come back to those other pages. And there's a method to my madness here. But on line 274, you're gonna see contracted services as an increase of $14,000 to bring it up to $20,000. We, there is no doubt we have a need for social work services for our kids. It's tapping out our school counselors. It's tapping out the one social worker that we have at the high school. That there is help that's needed to support kids. Because they can't be seen by a school counselor because they're busy with other kids. They can't be seen by a social worker because the social worker technically works for special ed, even though they do help out see regular ed kids from time to time. They go without having their needs met. We're dealing with this situation right now at the high school where, to be honest with you, if I had four social workers today, it probably wouldn't help. But I also know, in the budget times, for me to ask for a social worker, you know, you're talking salary, benefits, everything, there's no way we, as a district, can afford that, right? So try to be creative. We have a partnership with KBH. What KBH does is they have an office in the school. They work with families and let's say, you know, they need to work with my son. They work with my insurance, my insurance pays for it, right? Let's say I have main care. They work with main care, they bill main care. It doesn't come out of the school, it comes out of the insurance that the family has. Which is great, right? It's no cost, we're providing a service. Well, unfortunately, there are times where that process of getting, try to get into a doctor's office, right? How long does it take? It can take months, it can take weeks, it can take lots of time. What this contracted service line allows us to do is, if my son needs to be seen right now, we have money available where we can pay for those services while they work through the logistics of everything. Maybe my son doesn't need ongoing social work services. Maybe he's just having a bad day and just needs somebody to get him, this allows us that. So rather than pay for a full contracted person, that's our employee, having a little extra money available to work with KBH to pay for some of those additional times. I think it gives us what we need and will let us know long-term, is that model gonna work or do we need to look at our own social worker?
What does that look like? Do they schedule an appointment with?
Yeah.
Or is it like a virtual?
I know, they're right in the building. KBH does offer some virtual stuff, but a lot of our kids, we've found, don't really, they want to sit down with somebody. And so we do have some that do online and we can find a place for them to have a session, if you will. Really what I think parents benefit from is they don't have to take time off of work, pull their kid out of school to bring them to counseling. It happens right here. They have an office in the building.
So this money would cover kids that wouldn't be covered insurance-wise?
Correct, right, right. Or, you know, you're not on the caseload because they haven't run your insurance and all of that, but yet you're having a bad day. You have somebody who can do that and then we can pay for it. And then if it's something that develops longer, well, then we can work with the parents and the insurance. Any questions so far before I skip back to the next piece? Well, I have a question on that. Are there examples of that being done in the area to the extent that you're talking? We're doing it now because I think we budget, what's the difference there, about $6,000 that we currently, or five, five or $6,000 that we currently budget for them. So we're kind of doing that now. This just gives us more time. The problem is, like, KBH person, we have a new person start today. We may have them for two days a week. Well, those two days fill up pretty quick. You talk hour-long appointments, that fills up pretty quick over two days. So then, they're more than willing to work with us, give us another day if they have somebody available. Then we just, we just keep building upon it.
And that was gonna be my next question, because KBH has an eight-month-long waiting list. Would they be able to staff the extra time if we budget to pay for?
If you would've asked me this a month ago, I would've said no. But they now have somebody for us, they started today, so.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, the wait period is ridiculous.
Yeah, so having that available at school is great because they can even be seeing them while they're on the waiting list to see other people.
Now, you're highlighting another issue.
Sorry.
No, 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 don't apologize. It's the availability. It's been all year long to find somebody. But if any of you have been on the board for a few years, you know, we've gone without social work services as we try to find people and hire people and it's just, people aren't there, like anything else. Any of you who hire employees for a job, you know, they're just, name the job, there's not a whole lot of people out there. So I want to highlight, and I'm sorry, the print on there is a little bit smaller than what it is on my computer because of the way it looks, but. So how does this budget support our NIASC accreditation? And I know there's a few of you who weren't on the board when we went through this process. Basically, NIASC is an accreditation for our high school. It's a review process. It's a review process that starts, it's a 10-year process, and we start with a self-reflection, then out of that self-reflection, we make goals as a school community. From those goals, we set priority areas, sorry. From those priority areas, we set goals that indicates what we're gonna work on in that 10-year cycle. We had our visit a few years ago. Don't ask me the date, because my head's pounding right now, I couldn't even remember the year. But in from that, we set up, these are our major things we're gonna work on. One of the major things that came out of that was working on student engagement and authentic learning experiences in the classroom. So in order to support that, you may have noticed in the last several years, you know, we had presentations from the math department that came in and spoke about some of the things they're doing to increase student engagement in the class, different teaching practices. If you look at your budget on pages, starting on pages two through eight, okay? So we're going back to math from the beginning. This is where all the department budgets are, each one individually. So the things that are supporting our teachers in their teaching practices, trying to get better at student engagement, and just trying to find different teaching approaches, like the math department was. You're gonna look at line 25 on page two, you're gonna have a miscellaneous amount of $500. That amount I put in every year because there's always things that pop up that teachers want to go to, but they may not know about it until next October. Well, the problem is, we're building the budget right now, right? So there's, I always like to have a little wiggle room. That way, when something comes up, and a teacher can say, yeah, this is how it's gonna change my teaching, we can go. Different departments put in money. English, foreign language, math department, all put in money to support their department members going to state conferences that are put on by, like, the math teachers conference. And that's all the teachers in the state of Maine coming together for that, if that makes sense. Again, some great things are happening, and we've been able to share some of those great things, and it comes because teachers are willing to put in the time and energy to learn new things. And I think it was last year when Mrs. Cartel came and talked about the math department and what they were, just great stuff. Great stuff. Technology software, we've increased this, this is a yearly thing that we pay for. But it increases student engagement and, more importantly, or just as important, I should say, it gives teachers automatic feedback on student learning as class is going on. They use products like, something called Airedeck, Kami, EdPuzzle, where they can get instant feedback from the kids while class is going on. Okay, there's no longer the, I teach, you do the work, you leave, the next day we pick up and we keep doing the same thing, right? I can get feedback as the teacher as class is going on, on how you're learning these major concepts. And last, but certainly not least, on line 41 on page three, you're gonna notice a pretty good little jump there. That's for iReady Math and Reading under Technology Software. We started this two years ago, iReady, that you've heard a lot about. And what iReady does is it gives the teachers another piece of data to triangulate. So they can look at NWEA scores, what is that? They can look at the classroom assessment and how the student's doing in the classroom. iReady is another piece of information that lets them know how is the student doing overall and how are we doing overall as a school? And teachers are tracking them, they're having conversations together about, you know, how are the students doing overall? Are we seeing the growth that Erica and Michelle talked about? Are we seeing that growth? So iReady is being done K through 12, really 11, a few seniors are doing it, but. But that's what that increase is. Then you're gonna notice there's another, a couple more big-ticket items that aren't necessarily directly related to student need, even though it is, or to the school goals. You're gonna notice Instruction PE on page six, line 72. You're gonna notice Equipment PE has a pretty good jump of $10,545. We have a beautiful fitness room with a lot of really great equipment that students use at the high school, junior high students use, athletic teams use it, staff members use it. They're heavily used. And as you know, even though you buy good equipment, it breaks down and it has the shelf life of it. And with some of our treadmills, they're getting at the point of it's not really beneficial to keep repairing things and maintaining them. We just gotta go with them, right? So what we put in is to start a process of replacing these on a more regular basis, starting with two treadmills in the fitness room. And they're, you know, divided, $10,545 by two, that's how much you'd cost. There's also times where we do new things and innovative things, and it doesn't cost any more money than what we did in years past. And I think the science department is a perfect highlight of really cool things going on and things that we've talked about, I think, as the year's been going on. But our science courses are all going more hands-on, which are taught through an integrated model. Ninth graders are now taking what's called Biology on Earth. So rather than just having a separate biology and a separate earth science, it brings these two things together. Sophomores are gonna be taking Chemistry in the Solar System, which again, takes elements of Earth and space science, brings in chemistry, which is a natural fit, and they explore that one. Physics and the universe, again, same thing. We are not budgeting any more money in science to do this. We are taking the exact same that we had for this year that we spent and just re-changing, how is it that we're spending? So textbooks, rather than buying new textbooks, there's manuals that are coming out as these science courses are being created and using the money for those manuals as opposed to buying textbooks. Does that make sense? It's just shifting that. And that's on page seven. For the last several years, Shelley and I have talked about updating desks and chairs. And we've done this on a rotation, right? We can't afford to outfit the entire building with new desks and chairs. But what we do know is what we currently have isn't working. They're breaking, Shelley's fixing them all the time. Not only that, but there are combo desks, right? They're the same combo desks that, Ashley, I know you graduated from here, but probably the same ones that Ashley, you know, four years ago, when you graduated. They're the same desk, they've been here a long time. They need to be replaced. As we know, kids are getting a little bit bigger, right? Having a separate desk and chair is just more comfortable. We have kids sitting in these seats for 73 minutes, time to update in. So we budgeted for two classrooms, one in the English department at $6,200 and one in the Social Studies department. As you will notice, the math department's not up there anymore because we have now outfitted the entire math department with separate chairs. We've also, last year, went through, sorry, I thought Shelley was sitting there. We went over and we did some shopping over at the old junior high and found some that we were able to outfit a classroom over there as well. So we reuse every. I'm getting near the end of my presentation, but I did want to highlight that since 2018 and 2019, here are the staff that we've reduced from the high school. And every year, we are looking at the schedule, we are looking, obviously, the budget. But what we do is talk about need, need versus want. And if the need is less than what the want is, you have to make some tough choices sometimes and make some cuts. So in 2018, 2019, that year, we reduced an English teacher. Looked at the numbers of class sizes, looked at the schedule, what we needed for classes, and it was like, we don't really need that position. We eliminated an Academic Support Lab EdTech 3. And I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more in just a second. But what we did was, that one was, it was a tougher budget year, and some tough choices had to be made. We had an EdTech in the library at the time with a librarian, and we said, why don't we merge the librarian EdTech 3 and the Academic Support Lab EdTech together? And we'll just do Academic Support Lab in the library. So we tried that. What I didn't put up there, there was a year in there, and it might've been that same year, where there was a resignation of a librarian at the junior high across the parking lot when they were over there, and we started to use our librarian here to cover over there. So while we stretched out the EdTech 3 that was in the library, it really kind of, where do you think the time came away from? The kids who needed that extra help or the library services? Unfortunately, it was the other one that. In 2020, 2021, budget year, sorry, COVID year, if you want to go back that far, we reduced a PE teacher that year. We had between the junior high and high school, three. That year, we went down to two, and one of the high school ones went down to the junior high and covered it. That same year, the high school health teacher moved to be a junior high and high school health teacher. Wasn't just high school anymore. That year, we reduced the media center librarian from being a high school junior high one at this point and an elementary. Those of you who were around, remember, we went to one librarian for the entire district. That same year, the assistant principal moved to split with the junior high and high school. Instead of a high school one, a middle school one, we went to one assistant principal. In 21, 22, that year, we reduced the math teacher, again. Looked at the schedule, we were able to make things work, and we reduced a position. And in 23, 24, this year, we reduced three teachers, science teacher, a Spanish teacher, a social studies teacher. And again, I'm not saying we need to bring these back. I'm just pointing out the things we do to be fiscally responsible for the taxpayer. I pay taxes, I get it, I believe you. So with that being said, there is gonna be a request that's not in the budget, and that's for the Student Support Special. I previously called it Academic Support Lab. It's the same position, we just called it something different. It's an EdTech 3 for regular education. We did bring that position back during COVID times. So we actually only went without it, I think, for a year, if I remember right. Or the year that we tried to do it in the library, and then when we went to a one librarian model, we couldn't have the EdTech here do that and run the library. It just, it didn't work. This person provides additional support to students who may have a 504. It also provides students who don't have special ed services or a 504. There could just be a regular ed student that just maybe needs a little extra help, doesn't qualify for anything. It may be a kid who just needs somebody to sit on top of them, not literally, but to sit with them to make sure they get their work done. It provides that extra assistance. It was previously paid for with ESTER funds, unfortunately, those are drying up, and I am gonna be requesting to keep this going. I have seen what happens when you don't have this program, and it affects kids immediately. All right, any questions? I hope I didn't go too fast, but I laid out some of the major needs. And I hope clicking back and forth wasn't too chaotic. Thank you.
Mr. Erwin's up next.
Stand from the back and move forward. The overall budget's up around 6% after I come this year. And I'll go over some of the lines that, if I was sitting here, that I'd want to explain to you. Line 105 is repair and maintenance of the track. As Kenny, as Coach Nell said, that's how we maintain that beautiful track. We do have a partner in that. Whatever we put in this budget spot, the town now just do the partner track budget, so it's good that we have that. In the future, we probably could up that line, but I think this year, Amanda and I were comfortable with that number. Line 112, athletic supplies. And this year, we've always had two AEDs. One will be out at the soccer field, and one will be here on campus, that's our trainer. And we lost one of the, one of the AEDs died, we have to replace this year. That's why that line's so high. And we anticipate the next year, the next one's gonna go because it's about the same age. So that's kind of bad news. Line 113, what Mr. Bell just talked about, the fitness center. We have a beautiful fitness center that gets used by phys ed, special ed, athletics, teachers. And unfortunately, we've never put money to replace equipment, and we have a very small budget to maintain equipment. So I've added it into my budget for the first time, and I think it's money well spent to have that kind of equipment available for everybody to use. Line 133, inflation. Usually, I budget $2,600 for football equipment and repair, which we send all the shoulder pads and helmets away every year. And this year, it came up to close to $3,000. So I anticipate that's not coming down, so I boosted it up to about $3,200. Line 145, there's a C reduction in this line. That's just recognizing that last year, soccer got new uniforms, and obviously, this year, they're not gonna be uniformed, so they got reduced by quite a bit. One, line 153, same on the girls' soccer. We bought new uniforms last year, and they won't have them this year, so that line should do this quite a bit. Line 171, again, new uniforms, that line goes down from $3,700 to $200, always good to see that. Line 178, now, this is where we replace uniforms. Next year, the team will be giving new uniforms. It's been well over five years since they've had their uniforms. They may do, they do wear those for two seasons, football and football in this winter season, so they definitely do get some new uniforms. Girls' ice hockey, if you look at that line, you see $15,000 in the budget for next year. The good thing about that budget line is, we have a, that's actually a revenue line for us on another page. We only pay per DM. This year, we had 24 girls playing hockey, six were I's. So we're gonna get reimbursed from the other schools to 18 players that don't belong to Winslow. And last year, I've done the final numbers, you have last year, you got about $1,200 back each athlete from another school. So if you do the math, 1,200 times 18, we'll get back whatever that math is. Looks good to me.
If I could, I'm just, I'll touch on, since we, it always comes up to hockey, so boys hockey, girls hockey. Swimming is probably another area. I mean, the facility rentals are expensive, so it makes those sports look more expensive from a facility standpoint, but. But we're done with it after we pay that bill versus mowing the football field, mowing the soccer field, some of these other things that are buried in other budgets. They don't show up necessarily in the line item for that given sport. But those expenses are still there, and they're ongoing year-round, so just wanted to point out.
Just kind of, back when Mr. Selwood's son played hockey, the team would have access to the ice probably 10 hours a week. Now, we can't even get 5 hours. It's not that we're not willing to pay for it, there's no ice time available because we've got less ranks available, so. So that line has been decreasing every year, which is good from a budget standpoint. Line 1202. No, that's not 1202, not 202. Oh, 201, next year, baseball, getting new uniforms. It's been about six years since they've had uniforms. Then I want to talk about Boys Across and Girls Across. We have co-op both programs with Lawrence. And we did Boys last year, and we're adding Girls this year. What Lawrence and I decided to do, instead of doing a shared cost, they are gonna pay all expenses, Boys Across, everything associated with travel, everything, and I'll take the Girls Across program. That's the good news. The bad news is, I've had on announcements the last week about Girls Across, and I've had one young lady come to me and say she's wanting to play. I think there's some resistance to playing the co-op. And I told them, if we don't do that, we don't play. That's the kind of thing we have to understand, we just don't have the numbers. Last year, we weren't able to play varsity schedule due to not having enough players. So hopefully, that will change. I set up a meeting with the girls Monday that I can kind of educate them on, you know, what's going on. They're not gonna wear Lawrence uniforms any more than the Lawrence girls are gonna wear Winslow uniforms. We'll find a neutral column and stuff like we did last year for the boys. But that's how we're gonna run that. Boys will be through Lawrence, girls will be through me.
You know, just, obviously, I mean, we've had a lot of co-op sports, and they've all worked, so.
There's always resistance. I remember in hockey, my first year, we went shark with Waddle. The room was on fire when we brought that to them.
Well, Waddle was a hot guy.
We indicated, see, they're gonna be, wanna play with Waddle, we're not gonna play, being a little easy success.
He sort of knows what we're running in the beginning.
Yeah, that's absolutely. And line 246, wrestling. Again, they got new uniforms last year, they won't sit in next year. And that's an overall look at the budget. I looked at the total numbers last year, it was over 400 students participating in athletics. August is double kids in there. But I think what we do in athletics, as Coach Nell and Coach Davidson told you, goes beyond the athletic plan. We're really teaching life lessons for these young people, and it's very important. For some students, it's. For some students, it's one of the reasons that motivates them to go to school. So I think the money we spend, although there's a lot of money, is worth what we spend.
I think we got all our dollars worth back in.
Yep, absolutely.
In attracting kids to come to school, be that reason, life lessons. Any questions? Thank you. Take away the chelia.
Okay, this is for the maintenance of Winslow High School. Number one wants to go over. I just have a few I'm going to get on. Big one is, I'm really kind of excited about this one, I'm really proud of this one. This is page number 24, line number 347. And that's with our fuel pricing. Again, I'm excited about the price that we was able to lock into this year. And for the other two fuel, it was $2.88, about 2.8825. But that's like a 19 cents a gallon savings. And for the kind of fuel that we use in these buildings, that's huge. You know, you just look at the line right across, and that's like a $7,000 savings for Winslow High School and their fuel line. So that's exciting, when we can save that much money, you know, going out to bid and looking at the different pricing. So I was excited about that. So the other line that I'd like to have you folks look at tonight, and that's on page 26, line number 376. That's the primary buildings, repair and maintenance line. And that kind of outlines what I do with the buildings during the year. You'll see the type of maintenance that we do. And I'm proposing this year to continue with the flooring projects that we've been doing for the last few years. Because, believe it or not, we are getting there. We are getting there. It was a big process to start. It was huge to get it started and get it kicked off. And it's made a huge difference. You know, you walk down the hallways now, and they're bright, they're cheering, they're welcoming. Whereas, you know, the polished old concrete just wasn't very welcoming. So the new flooring, the quartz tile flooring that we're putting down, it's a nice flexible vinyl type of flooring. It's very nice, it's warm, it's welcoming. The commons, we're going to be redoing the commons for this year. We've got a couple of classrooms in the academic wing that we're going to do this year. And we're also going to do the nurses suite this year. So I'm really excited about that, and I'm hoping that we can continue to do that for the next few years until we get the whole school done. So it's a process, but we've come a long way from the first year we started. So it's very nice. So that's really the two big lines that I've had. The only other line that we went up in, and that was in line number 377, which is your general maintenance supply line. And as you all know, you know, you go to a hardware store, lighting store, wherever you go, everything, the prices are increasing tremendously. You know, just to do a filter change in this building, which would consist of your rooftop units, your univents, you know, to do a full filter change, it's over $2,000. And we do that twice a year. You know, because we have to. So, you know, just thinking about that cost alone, you know, that's $4,000 in filters. But, you know, in order to keep the building safe and to make sure we don't, we're not creating a sick building, we have to change these filters out, and we have to do it at least two times. And in some parts of the building, the univents, we do even more so because of the fact that they draw random particulates from outside, or the classroom seems to be busier, or, you know, we do keep a very close watch on these filters because it's important. But that really sums up the budget for the buildings and grounds. And I've not done a lot of changes there. Things have gone well in this building, they can run well, and they're continuing to run very well, so. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
All right. What's the brutality of that high school? Transportation.
So Ashley Poole, our transportation director, is assisting with a family emergency, and she's unable to be here this evening. And so she has presented her information to me and asked that we present her transportation budget, which we will gladly do so. So in your package, you should have a three-page transportation budget. I'll just highlight the important pieces that Ashley wanted to have highlighted. The first is in line one, you'll see that there's an increase in the amount of $4,000. Ashley anticipates transporting an additional student to Auburn daily next year, as well as the current 12 students that are being transported. There's a cost there. Line three, wages bus drivers, there's an increase there, and that increase is due to contracted contractual obligations. Those of you who might have assisted with that process, we renegotiated the bus driver contract a few years back in order to get our bus drivers competitive with other bus drivers in the area. In order to keep our bus drivers, we needed to offer a competitive wage. So that's part of that increase that you see there. I'll drop down to line 23 on the first page. And that also is a contracted services line, there's an increase there as well. That increase is for safety, looking at replacing the camera system, upgrade for two of the buses that we currently have. The older model only has two views, and we would like to upgrade those cameras in order to have five views and better see what's occurring on the buses. Line 24, jump to that page. That's purchase transportation. There's an increase in that amount as well. We currently use Moja Bus Service in order to do our afternoon sports drop-offs while our regular bus drivers deliver students to their homes. You know, there are times when you have conflicting schedules. There are times when our drivers are not able to do the sports event. And so we need to do, we need to have contracted services in order for what Jim just spoke about, to be able to take place. Line 26, there's, you'll see a little bit of an increase in that line as well, that's transportation services. You'll hear more about transportation services in a future meeting when we talk about the central office and how we cost share certain services still with Waddle and Vasebo. This is one of those areas where you have a transportation director, a year-round secretary, and an academic secretary. That was fairly recently added, which is why you see the increase. The academic secretary also drives a van. And she was cost shared with the three communities at 40%. But what we've learned is that she's driving a lot for Winslow. So that cost share really is more of a 60% share. So the total increase there is that number that you see. However, having said that, again, when we get to the next part of our budget presentation and we talk about central office and costs shares and the savings that we are still incurring by doing this, you'll see that it's still very much worth your while. The other piece I'd like to hand, show you, or she'd like to show you, she wanted to hand out these bus charts of the buses that we have. And what you see on this chart is the bus number, the make of the bus, the capacity, the year of the bus, the mileage, the fuel, is it gas or is it diesel? The age of the bus, which is very important. And whether it's a spare or if it's on the road. Now, this is important because we have a bus in this budget. And we have not had a, we have not added a bus in the budget for a few years now. And it's time to add one. We're going to be dropping, we're going to be paying off two this year. So we're going to add one. We were very fortunate during COVID, we were able to purchase several buses through, with COVID funds. But now it's time to put one back in, because what happens is if you don't put one back in, you actually create a hole in your budget. And bus purchases, transportation is a reimbursement-based model, and you get all of the money back in a year. So it's important not to put that hole there, and it's important to keep your fleet active and up to date. Couple of formulas go into when you need a new bus or when can you apply for a new bus. The first one is the bus needs to be at least 10 years old. The second, it needs to have at least 110,000 miles. And once you hit those two magic numbers, you can, you can apply for a bus. And you need to be accepted. Ashley has applied for a bus this year, we have been accepted. So we do have one in the budget, and we have two that are, that are coming off our rolls in terms of being paid for. So line 48 is the next line, I'd like to touch upon. Line 48 is bus maintenance. And you can see the buses that we have, you can see the year of the buses. The buses obviously need to be maintained. They go through inspections. You know, we have 14 buses, three vans, you know, oil changes, minor repairs, adjustments, window fixtures, door fixtures, you name it. Inspections every eight weeks, to stay in compliance with state regulations. Our buses need to be safe. And so that's, there's a cost for that, and that's what you see there. Those are the major highlights, the major points that she wanted me to bring to your attention. Is there any questions on that?
Are we locked in on fuel for the buses room?
We did not lock in on fuel.
We figured out fuel through works.
Okay. Okay. So they're working on whatever they're doing for hopefully a major body.
I believe they locked in with diesel, but they couldn't lock in gasoline. Nobody would lock in a pressure, because it's too volatile.
Yeah.
So, not that they would like to, we didn't, we tried, but nobody would connect.
Okay.
Question about the buses, when you buy a new bus, do you retire a bus?
Yeah, we do. Sometimes we hang on to it, depending on how many are in our fleet. At one point, there were like 18 buses in this fleet, and several of them were just all sitting there. And so we retired those. But yes, we absolutely, that's what we do.
And it looks like we have two that are kind of, you know, almost in the category of what you're talking about, 110,000, 110,000.
Great observation. So the one that's got the highest would be the one that would be eliminated if we get, if we get this one. Next year, we would probably put another one in there so that we would have two on the books again, like we have now.
Yeah, second one will definitely be there next year.
I see most of the new buses now are gas. Is that a conscious decision they made that the gas ones own better or?
There are several things of that. The diesel is more expensive to repair, and some of the things that need to be done to the diesels to repair can't be done with our local shop. Sometimes they need to be sent out to O'Connor's, and that becomes costly.
So they're cheaper to run?
Cheaper to run, I believe they're cheaper to purchase as well. They could gas diesel, a gas bus runs around 90,000, a diesel bus runs more than that.
I'd say we're lucky we don't have electric buses, that we turned in our diesels or gas buses in some of these districts that turned in their, turned in their buses to get an electric bus they can't take down the road, so. Glad we're not in that situation where they're having to rent buses because they're short. So maybe when they figure it out, that'll be a future, but it isn't right now. All right, well, that's all the budgets we're covering tonight. Does anybody have any questions on any of those before we move on? Any more pieces that we have?
Well, that's, I guess what we want is to ask you permission to have us a meeting in March. And then we will have our regular March meeting. I think that will take care of us after that regular March meeting.
All right, we'll discuss that meeting coming up here.
We're getting close.
All right, again. Vote on appointments, we have five people, do we have any additions? So good to vote we got. So anyone interested in making a motion to take these as a group? Maxine went first, Karen went second, so we have a motion, we have a second. All right, anybody have any comment about taking them as a group? Okay, all in favor of taking the vote of the group of appointments as a group? All right, all right, so that was Janice. All right, so we have a group of appointments, do we have a motion to approve the group of appointments? Motion and second, Megan, Karen. Any discussion on the group? Okay, all in favor of approving the group of appointments? All right, Janice. All right, we have a few resignations. It is unfortunate, but they will be missed. Jack, you mentioned bus driver, Jack's been with us a long time. Wish him all well in his future endeavors. All right, so we have an executive session, but before we go to that, because we have no actionable items to have have our video stream when we get back. There's no vote on anything coming out of executive session, so I will jump ahead and indicate you indicated a special meeting on March 12th, that Tuesday? That's our proposed date, does that date work for people?
Tuesdays are a fight, can we get it to work? Same time.
Same time, same place? Answer that one? Okay. All right.
It's a different time, I don't know.
It's a different time because we couldn't move it up, that makes it work better for people.
Not the time, it's the day.
Okay.
Oh, on Tuesday, wow. I teach ballet, but I could find a stop or something.
Okay.
Sorry, you didn't, I didn't know that.
Okay, yeah, we just could, we'll be working our way through the budget. It's, should primarily be a budget meeting, I'm not saying that we won't work on small appointments or something, that needs to be active.
On Mondays easier for people?
Well, I had a conflict on Monday, if we move it up and it's short, maybe that could work? I don't know if that's a possibility for anybody. It'd have to be like a five o'clock meeting. So I don't know if that is any better than a Tuesday. I haven't heard any opinions one way or the other.
I can do Monday, I'm a medical patient, it's happening Monday, so that's going to be, I can't.
Okay, okay, so Monday is.
What later on in the week? Are you off today?
Is there another? Is there another day during that week that works for others?
Better? I would say would be better.
It'd be Thursday, the 14th.
No, please ask them.
Yeah, we could still go meeting. Does that work better for people, so 14th, Thursday?
Better for you?
Better for you? Steve?
That doesn't matter too much to me.
Okay. Doesn't matter.
What day do you want to do it?
Thursday, 14th?
We need it four on that day.
Yeah. Yeah, but, but, okay. We'll be all right. We can make it work.
That means we don't eat dinner, or what?
Taco lunch.
We'll work.
So you wanna do six?
Get a pizza or something in between.
Um, six? Yeah, couldn't be earlier, because we're doing negotiations, so. That seemed to be a better day, that work for you?
Sure.
We're good? Okay, so that's gonna be Thursday, fourteenth.
And that'll be here?
Yes. And that will be here. All right. So before we go to our, um, executive session, our next regular meeting after that one is March twenty-fifth at six, right here. And so with that, um, do we have a motion to go on executive session according to one MRSA, paragraph four oh five, six D, labor contract, full discussions, ESP contract? Do we have a motion to that effect? Yep. Motion second, okay, all in favor, executive session. Okay, unanimous, so those who aren't involved with that, thank you for coming.